I call the eight o'clock agenda briefing to order. Mr. Crunkler?
Good morning. The invocation will be Chairwoman Barbara Acock, the pledge of allegiance will be Commissioner Bevin Foster.
We might need to change that if he doesn't get here. Commissioner Acock will do it.
Okay. We'll have approval of the minutes as item one, then we'll move on to discussion and adjustment of the agenda. And we do have two items to add. I guess we'll put them under unfinished business. One is a contract change order request for additional tree removal at Corporate Drive at the site of the DSS and Health Building. The other is bids for the rear roof replacement of 800 Corporate Drive. We received three bids. Those have been handed out to you, and we'd be looking for approval for that.
That's under what? You?
Those were handed to you.
Okay, we've got them. Okay.
Yeah, those are two walk-ons.
Are you putting those on a consent agenda?
I can put them either under consent or I can put them under unfinished business, either one. We can do it.
Let's do consent.
Okay, they can both go under consent. We'll add those under consent. I will go back over them in just a second then. Then we move to special presentations. We'll have a motion to approve the 2023 Goldsboro-Wayne Joint Purple Heart Proclamation. We'll have item number four is an NC, does anybody would hoop, anybody would, you'd like to read that? Or who of you all would not read that?
Unless someone else on the board would like to read it.
Barbara says she'd read it.
Looks like Ms. Barbara's gonna, okay?
Do I have a copy of it?
It's in your agenda package. Number four is the NC Freedom Fest presentation by Mr. Doug McGrath. Number five is a presentation by Emma Britt from Wayne Preparatory Academy about the NC ACC Youth Voice Conference. And then number six, moving into unfinished business, is a motion to approve amendment number two for the Goldsboro Industrial Campus. A change order for Withers and Ravenel in the amount of $76,500 for additional services and appropriate budget amendment. We can go with that in a regular meeting, or if you have any questions now, I can try to answer.
I don't care when you do it, but I definitely want to go over it.
Sure, we'll do it now, yeah.
Moving into the consent agenda, item number seven is your late disabled veterans exemption applications. There are several of those attached in your agenda. Those have all been vetted by the tax office. Your late, and number eight is your late elderly and disabled exemption application. I think there's one of those that's attached in your agenda package. And then we move into budget amendments, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Allison.
First budget amendment. Your first budget amendment is actually going to be one for the 2223 fiscal year. This is a cleanup item for us, and these are what used to be agency funds. They're pass-through monies. One is for DSS, for their client income and payments they do on behalf of their clients. The other is for the sheriff's account, and this is for civil writs that are issued and they have to collect on. So this is to budget for these items, the income and expenditure. We used to not budget for these, but it's an accounting standard that came out in recent years that requires us to budget for these now. So it's an in and out. Okay, your next budget amendment and the rest of these will be for this fiscal year, 2324. Your first one is for the NC Forest Service. This is to appropriate additional funds for the contract. The total amount being appropriated is $41,278. It is being budgeted from contingency. We have some remaining and would not have to take it from fund balance. There was an increase in this contract, and it was not entered into the original budget.
What, explain to me why we are contracting with the North Carolina Forest Service?
That's a requirement of the state. I mean, that's, we do that every year.
We have a share of 40% of those costs, and the state maintains 60% of those costs.
We're required to bear part of that cost.
Kind of like cooperative extension.
Okay, okay.
Or beaver control, any of those programs.
Okay.
It's a cost share.
Okay, your next budget amendment is for services on aging. This is a budget amendment to increase their senior health insurance program by $595, and this is additional funds received per their latest grant agreement. Then you have a budget amendment for services on aging, and I think we do have several for her program because she's received her grant agreements for the year. She is overall decreasing that program. This is the family caregiver support program by $1,700, and you can see that she's adjusting her line items accordingly. Even though she did have a decrease in this line item, she does have some increases in other grant line items. And these are, several of these are from Eastern Carolina Council. Your next budget amendment is for services on aging for health promotions, increasing the total grant by $56.70. You have a budget amendment for services on aging for the HCCBG funds. This is the home community care block grant, and it is increasing that program by $2,520. And specifically on this one, it's just a hospitalization. That's because the employee that works in that program elected county insurance, and the employee prior to them did not. So that's why you're seeing that adjustment there. Okay, you have one for services on aging for $7,820. This is also for home community care block grant funds, and I think that one is for the hospitalization increase. I think I just misspoke on the prior one. The other one was increasing the grant altogether, and this one is reallocating funds to cover the hospitalization. I apologize for that. Okay, we have another one for the services on aging program for $3,900. This is to increase the donations received for their program this year, and it will go to their miscellaneous supplies. And that was from the J.L. Maxwell Jr. Foundation. Your last budget amendment is for the Health Department, and you will see it has several line items. It's for $193,745. This is to balance to the latest agreement from the Department of Public Health specifically for reducing infant mortality in communities. And these are grant funds that are received through the state that will be used to cover salaries, wages, for oversight and operational expenses of this program. And then I did want to mention earlier, the two items that were added to consent agenda, if we could add and appropriate a budget amendment to both of those, then I won't have to bring those back before you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Allison. Moving along to number 10 is a motion to approve the final plat for Drakey State, section four. And I'll ask Barry to come up for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In Drakey State, this is our first subdivision today. It is section four in a final plat. So basically, with it being a final plat, it is the end of the process where this development, all the improvements are in. So they are ready to start selling lots and construct homes. There are 34 lots in this subdivision. It is off of Ridge Drive, which if you head out down 13 South, when you turn there at the fairgrounds to the right on 13 South, you'll take a turn back up to the right on Sand Hill, and it'll be on the left there at Ridge. So it's just right off of Highway 13. The average lot size is 18,600 square feet. We do have a bill of standards letter from DOT basically stating that the roads do meet their minimum construction standards, and the planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval.
So these all would have safety tanks?
They would, yes, sir.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay, number 11 is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Hunter's Cove, section four.
All right, Hunter's Cove, excuse me, is, as mentioned, is a preliminary plat. So this is the start of the process. So there are no improvements in place. They will come back before this board with a final plat at some point after they have finished construction or started and finished construction. This subdivision does propose 19 lots. This is off of Indian Springs Road. They're kind of between Stanley Chapel and Emmett Church Road. This is phase four, so there is, there are some phases that are already existing. This will be an extension of that subdivision. The subdivision was done probably, I'm thinking, in the early 2000s. This phase was part of that original preliminary plat with lots, but they never finished this phase or never finished the subdivision, which included this phase. So, and it's just sort of sit there. So now someone has come in and kind of picked that back up and redesigned this last phase and has resubmitted it for approval.
Barry, on the top of the plat there, it deadens street. Does it tie into something else, or?
The one at the top. It does not. It actually deadens into. It does. Eliza Drive, there's an Eliza Drive that kind of deadens into, the track to the north that just stubs out for future development and will eventually tie back into Indian Springs. To the left, Shells Drive goes off the page to the top left. That's where it connects into Indian Springs Road up there. So Shells Drive does extend up and connect into the main road. So that's how you would get in and out would be through Shells Drive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this one where DOT is having them upgrade the road?
Yeah, this one, one of our recommendations that we're required to put on the plat was that they bring Shells Drive, the existing section, up to DOT standards because it has gone into some disrepair. So before the final plat is submitted and comes in, not only would they have to certify that the new street, the addition, meets DOT standards, but also the existing street does as well. So that way it doesn't burden the residents who are already there in that existing phase.
I'm glad you hear that you're doing that because that's not been the case in the past.
Right, yep.
Good addition, thanks.
Number, moving on to number 12, is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Toulton Farms, section three.
Okay, like the previous plat, this is a preliminary as well. So this is the start of the process for this subdivision also. There are 12 lots proposed. This is on the east side of Fields Road out into Nahuna Community. It's kind of between Pavel Princeton Road and Nahuna Road. The average lot size is 20,830 square feet, and the planning board does recommend approval of this subdivision.
That one will expand, correct? I mean, this is just first phase.
There is the potential, yeah, there is the potential that it could expand. I think the soils in the back, once you get further back, are not so good. They're, they're not very well-drained soils. So there may be some limitations as they move further back.
And this one is to, because I know there's going to be some on both sides of Fields Road. This is the one on the east side, correct?
On the east side, that's right.
I know you mentioned about in and out, you know, except for, you know, MS or fire department. Does this have an out outlet?
This one.
We see it coming out on Fields Road.
No, this one only have one access directly on the Fields Road. You know, at some point, you know, they may extend back further, but the way this property is designed, there would not be a second access in and out. It would just have the main access. If they get up to 100 lots, we would require a secondary access or an emergency access. But in this case, the subdivision probably won't come close to that. If they do expand.
Any questions?
Well, you just said, is that lookable to stuff that's in the ETJ as far as the over 100 lots? Even though it's in the county? We got a subdivision that's in the county and it's in, it does not.
It does not, that's right. Anything outside of the ETJs?
I got you. Just, just to make sure I understand.
Any other questions on that one? I think you wanted to, I made a mistake. On our adjustment of the agenda, we wanted to remove the preliminary plat for Crawford.
Right.
And that's still the case, yeah.
So we'll remove 13. I still have a question on it.
Yeah.
Is that in Pfeiffer's ETJ?
Part is and part's not. The eastern part of that subdivision is in the ETJ. There's a line that kind of cuts through the subdivision. It's maybe hard to see on the, on the computer version. But part of it, the eastern part is in the ETJ. The part, of course, towards Summerfield is in the ETJ, and the western side of that subdivision extends out into the county.
And my question is, because the part that serves besides Pleasant Grove Church, that's in Pfeiffer's ETJ, and all of the streets are dead-end streets. They don't have any cul-de-sacs.
That's right.
And this one, what's in the ETJ, they basically do the same thing, but what's in the county will have to have cul-de-sacs.
Right.
Okay. Can we encourage Pfeiffer to have cul-de-sacs on? I know you're talking to her, but, but can you, can we at least encourage it?
I think Pfeiffer's actually already, from what I understand, I think they've already approved it, their side of it.
Okay.
I think they approved their side last month, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Or earlier this month. No, it's August, so last month. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Barry. Moving on to the new number 13 would be a motion to establish a public hearing on August the 15th, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioner's Meeting Room in the Wayne County Courthouse Annex at 224 East Wallant Street in Goldsboro to receive public comments regarding a proposed economic incentive to grant to Alta Foods LLC. The Board of Commissioners will consider it a $15,300 incentive grant payable over three years in exchange for the company's commitment to invest $2 million in capital improvements and to create 17 jobs in Wayne County. So you'll be establishing that public hearing at that date and time.
And attached to that, but not that you're acting on today, is the agreement that will ultimately be signed, assuming you approve it. It's very important, these are 17 new jobs.
Right.
And it's also, these jobs have to remain in place through December 31, 2031.
That is, that, that is a growing business. He's, he's, he works hard at it.
Okay, moving along to number 14. The new number 14 was an add-on that we walked on. It was a prime contract change order request, number 001, to TA Lovin for additional tree removal on Corporate Drive. This was at the site of our DSS and Health Building. This amount is $36,722. Attached to your map is, to your information is the bid from Best Sand and Gravel for the removal of those trees, and there's a map showing the area of the trees where you see the trees that we removed. So we'll be looking for approval of that, plus an appropriate budget amendment. Any questions on that?
Actually, they've already been removed, right?
Yes, sir. They had to be removed because they were mobilized on-site. So please approve it. Now, we were, we were very fortunate that they were already on-site, and so as a result of that, we tried to go ahead and get them to do this work that needed to be done anyway. So it was a good savings to the county. And then, any other questions on that one? Moving on to number 15 is Corporate Drive. This is one that the board requested we rebid out, the rear roof replacement. We did the front of it, and then there was a change order for an excessive amount. We rebid the project out. We received three bids, and DLT Roofing in Kinley was the lowest bidder. We've asked for several references, and we've heard nothing but good reviews on them. We recommend that we award the bid to them. So if you'll see attached, DLT Roofing, Roofing's bid has been attached to that document you were handed.
What was the prior bid?
I cannot remember off the top of my head. It was much more than this.
Much more?
Yes, about $100,000, I believe.
My question is, why didn't we do the whole roof at the same time?
Do what?
Why didn't we do the whole roof at the same time?
We had a bid for the previous one. They did the front portion, which is a separate roof, at a different height. Then when they got to the rear roof, they wanted a change order to change the materials being used, which bumped the cost up $200,000, I believe. We brought it back to the board, and the board asked that we rebid it out. Which saved us some money.
Okay, that was the key push.
It would save us money, yes.
I'm happy.
Me too, so. I'd be looking for approval of this with appropriate budget amendment.
Keep Allison happy.
And then we'll go to public comments, county managers' report, Board of Commissioners' committee reports, closed session, and we do have a closed session, and then adjourn.
Do we want to do closed session?
Got time to do it, Dan, don't you?
We have time, yeah.
Thank you, Barry. Should we get a closed session for?
And it's to consider businesses in Wayne County and to consult with your attorneys to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Okay, we're down closed session.
Good morning. I call the August 1st Agenda Meeting to Order. Imocation to be Mr. Barbara Acock. Can we bow our heads, please? Our Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking you for guidance and support in the decisions that are being made here. We also pray for our clerk Carol Bowden's family during the loss of a family member. We pray for everyone who need your help and guidance and the sick and in people that are needing help from everyone who needs support. Thank you and amen. Lady Legits, Commissioner Williams.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have approval for the July 18th meeting?
Don't move.
Got a motion on the floor to approve July 18th meeting. Okay, past.
Twenty-four of them, I love it.
Got some extra people here.
Adjustment of the agenda.
That's November.
I do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. We handed out two walk-on items. One was for prime contract change order requests, number one, for additional tree removal at our DSS and health site. I asked that that be placed under the consent agenda with appropriate budget amendment. The second one was a rear roof replacement at 800 Corporate Drive. I asked that be put under the consent agenda with appropriate budget amendment attached. We also asked that we remove item number six under unfinished business, which is a motion to approve amendment two for Goldsboro Industrial Campus, a change order for Withersden Avenue. We'll remove that off the agenda for now. And we also want to move under the consent number 13, a motion to approve preliminary flat for Crawford Place, remove it from the consent agenda. And that's all the changes. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the adjusted agenda for August 1st.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to move the adjusted.
Let's see if we went up in number.
Got it right this time.
Up to eleven.
Up to eleven.
Playing the lottery.
Is that voting still proceeding?
Okay, moving on to special presentations. We have a motion to approve the 2023 Goldsboro Wayne Joint Purple Heart Proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Crumpler, and I have the honor to read this.
Oh, we got somebody here.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This proclamation comes before you in preparation for the Purple Heart banquet that we're hosting this Saturday at the Maxwell Center. It reads, "Whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August 7th, 1782 during the Revolutionary War, as the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor or merit. And whereas the Purple Heart was created by an order stating, 'Let it be known that he who wears the military order of the Purple Heart has given his blood in the defense of his homeland and shall never be revered, shall forever be revered by his fellow countrymen. And whereas the Purple Heart is awarded to military and civilian members of the U.S. Armed Forces who are wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy and posthumously to the next of kin in the name of those who were killed in action or die for wounds received in action. And whereas the citizens of Goldsboro and Wayne County have great admiration and utmost gratitude for the men and women who have selflessly served their country in the armed forces. And whereas the Goldsboro City Council and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners commend the board of directors of the Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Organization for honoring Purple Heart recipients at its annual banquet on August 5th, 2023 as a special tribute to those service members who have received the Purple Heart. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council and Wayne County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Signed by Mayor Hamm and Chairwoman Acock."
Thank you. Any comments?
Right, question.
Yes.
Did y'all do any research on who the actual Purple Hearts that were in Wayne County? And my question is, and I apologize. My wife lost two uncles, gave their life during World War II. I mean, she never do them because they were killed before she was born. And she had asked me to look into it and I had just forgot it.
Yeah.
I mean, for another year, I mean, do you, do we do, is it, I mean, how do, how do I get their, their names recognized? Right.
So they would be recognized as what we refer to as a PMD, a post-military deceased member that has a Purple Heart.
Right.
This year we'll have, I think it's 24 families represented and you would be added to that list. And there would be a certain point in time where we actually recognize, call that name, pay honor, and then present the family with a special gift.
Okay.
That list is ever-evolving. Every year, we think we've exhausted all the Purple Hearts in Wayne County. And mysteriously, this year, for example, we've come up with four new ones. And they're not people who've just moved here. We've petitioned the state, we've petitioned the Veterans Health Administration for some kind of access to the Purple Hearts databases. There is no true Purple Heart database unless you join the Military Order of the Purple Heart. That's the only way that anybody has any kind of an official database of who has the Purple Heart. So makes our job very difficult. Obviously, you have to show proof of Purple Heart to receive a license plate, many other different things throughout our community. But it's just impossible to get, to break through HIPAA and everything else and get those names. So we just word of mouth, we were fortunate to get an add in the buzz this year. We picked up a few people from that, so it's just an evolving process every year and we'd be glad to honor your family next year.
Okay, I thank, my first wife's dad, he was a Purple Heart recipient, which he, he, he got wounded, so. But I don't know whether his name's on it or not. I mean, and that's my fault for not looking into it like she asked me to. But I.
I don't think we've, I don't think we have anything this year on the program, but we can per certain add it next year.
Okay.
And it's, the only, if you guys can find any kind of official certification, we are pretty particular. We've had people in the past that.
My daughter, my daughter has actually got. My daughter has actually got her, her granddaddy's Purple Heart.
So that's, that's, and with it being World War II, it probably has his name on the back of it.
Okay, I don't know, you know, I mean, I've seen it, but I've never, you know, examined it.
So to answer your question, we'd be, we'd be honored to honor them next year at the banquet.
And she had asked me to look into it and I just, I had so much going on, I just, I just hadn't done it. But thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Do I have a? Do you have a motion in the face?
Thank you, sir.
Have a motion on the floor to approve the joint Purple Heart proclamation.
Okay, moving along to number four is the NC Freedom Fest presentation by Mr. Doug McGrath.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I think I have it. I appreciate the opportunity to update you. It's that time of year again for NC Freedom Fest. So we are 39 days out. Our event will be September 9th downtown Goldsboro. It is a military and first responders appreciation festival. So respecting the time limit, I will really fly through material. This first slide gives you a sense that the base of sponsors continues to grow. NC Freedom Fest is a nonprofit volunteer organization, so we rely upon the support of sponsors and volunteers to make the event happen. Actually, in between sending this, for this presentation and today, we've added three or four more sponsors, which is really great to see the outpouring from the community. So the event this year continues to grow. We will start on Thursday, September 7th. This is very much in keeping with our one community concept that has been kind of a lifestyle for us for the last few years with the event. So United Way is returning to Thursday night for the Taste of Wayne after having had it on Saturday the last couple of years due to COVID. So they will actually kick off Freedom Fest events for us on that Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00, I believe are their hours, and that will be downtown. Immediately following that, and this is a late addition, so it's not on the slide, the Paramount will be hosting a free showing of Top Gun. I'm not sure if it's the original or the more recent one, but we really hope to get the base personnel to enjoy that as a free benefit. And then Friday evening, we will support the theme of red. So it would be our hope that we can get everybody to show up in something red, red short for remember everyone deployed. And the picture in my mind's eye is that we get a whole bunch of patriots in front of the stage as Joe Brown and the band are performing and we get that working social media to go around the world while we're able to thank people in person at our event. We know that there are a lot of people that are deployed and not able to be here. We want to reach out to them in some fashion, so this campaign will, will honor that. And then Saturday, as we refer to it, the main event, we'll have the Military Appreciation Awards and art contest, which is a new development this year. That is a collaborative effort between the Arts Council and Wayne County Public Schools. We're really excited about that, so right now there are, on display in the public libraries in Goldsboro, Pikeville, and Mount Olive, the 14 finalists artwork. This is a great way to get young people engaged and to understand patriotism. And so the day of the event, we will actually crown three champions. That will be handled by the Arts Council and Wayne County Public Schools and we'll call those young people up on stage to honor them. We will have a flyover again, which has become a big deal. We will have a flyover again, which has become a big deal for us, you know, that's something the crowd really looks forward to, a car and bike show, craft vendors, family-inclusive area, static displays, kids' activities, all of that is free. The only thing that is not free is what people choose to eat and drink that day by supporting the food trucks that are there. And we will have live music on three stages that will go from three until about nine-thirty. So we'll have one stage up on Center Street, kind of in the middle of the car and bike show and the static displays, and then we will have two stages down on the, the main And I'll skip past that because I think I can cover that and the rest of what we're doing. The artist lineup, we're really excited by, so Wood and Steel veterans that are local, we expect that to be a, a strong draw, Pink Slips, cover lots of genres, Soul Psychedelic, in fairness, could be the headliner, a fifteen-piece band, they are an amazing draw for us. Tyler Davis and his band are also a strong draw. And then our headliner this year is LV Shane, so LV is a breakout country music artist, you all may remember him from the Guitar Pole, since then, he's been on tour in Europe, he's back from that, and excited to be coming out here. In terms of marketing, we are working closely with our sponsors so that they're fully integrated in terms of everything that we're doing. It's our objective to throw a big party where we get to say thank you to those who serve and afford us our freedoms. We want to make sure that the sponsors understand that and that they're working in their social networks to bring as many people out as possible. Time Warner will begin airing an ad that will run probably starting in about a week, and that will go through our event. Curtis Media will have about eight hundred mentions in Goldsboro, about a hundred and twenty on the coast, in addition to Goldsboro Daily News. We will have an aggressive social media campaign that we will start pushing out in about ten days. An official printed program, if you all haven't seen that, it is a award-winning publication that, that we produce each year, and each year, we tell a story. This year, the story will be of an airman and his working dog that were both injured while deployed. So we're weaving that into our theme. Both were covered, the airman's is active duty at Wright Patterson, and the dog, I'm not sure if the dog's been retired yet or not, but it'll be an interesting story that we share. Part of what we're trying to suggest is that we bring as many people out there as possible. Last year, we drew about sixteen thousand people to the festival, amazing to think of, but if you just pause and think, if everybody that was there brought one friend, this becomes thirty thousand people gathering in downtown Goldsboro to honor military and first responders. That, to me, is, is really kind of what we're looking, what we're shooting for. So some event moments, I already mentioned the Red, the Remember Everyone Deployed, the opening is always a very patriotic theme and, and very moving. The art contest, we're really excited about in terms of being able to bring those young people up on stage. They will be followed immediately by the Military Appreciation Awards. We present to three airmen, and that is something that gets a lot of traction on base. So these are people that have received accolades on base, but John Q. Public doesn't necessarily know the great things that they have done, that they've been recognized for. The flyover, and we'll try to make certain that everybody is aware of the time of that so that we, we create another patriotic moment there. We have fifty-six hundred American flags that will be handed out to the crowd, so we can try to get everybody kind of waving a flag at a couple moments, that will probably be one of them, and then, of course, our headliner. So volunteers, United Way is supporting our effort. Again, this, this is a collaboration not just of sponsors, but of lots of area nonprofits coming together, and really, nobody takes credit for what is happening, we all just want to put the event on and have that really kind of be the, the message. But this, this year, United Way is helping us organize the online links and recruiting for volunteers. We need something in the neighborhood of fifty, and I say fifty-ish, it's probably closer to sixty, but fifty to sixty volunteers to help us set the event up, tear it down, keep it safe, in between. So that link will be out on our social media and on our website in the next couple of days. And I will close with, that leaves a lot to be done for a successful 2023 event. We really appreciate the support of the county, of the city, of Seymour Johnson, of our sponsors and volunteers. This is becoming a movement, so last week, when we had the privilege of being over at Cherry Point, I made sure to represent Wayne County and to explain that this event is not just for Wayne County. So we'd love to see Marines here, we'd love to see Army here, and get all of those families out. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. It's a great event, it's, it's really grown every year and getting bigger and bigger every year, that's, that's good to see. Moving on to our number five is a presentation by Emma Britt from the Wayne Preparatory Academy about the NC ACC Youth Voice Conference.
Good morning. Hope y'all doing well. My name's Jessica Hamilton, and I'm here with Emma, we're from 4H, and she's going to tell you about herself and her trip coming up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I've been a part of 4H for two, almost three years, and during that time, I've attended many different events, learning lots of things, and I am currently serving as the Wayne County Council Historian, as well as the Southeast District Reporter. And I'm looking forward to the Youth Voice Event at the end of August, where I can learn more about our government and what it does, and I can't wait to attend it with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We also would like to get a picture, if that's okay.
Sure.
Who have added you to? You'll take the picture? I'm the picture tech. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All righty, moving on now to our consent agenda, we'll ask for approval of that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. Let's see how many you brought along to vote.
Six. Wait a moment.
See? We used this next new one.
All righty, Madam Chair, it's time for our public comments section, and I believe we have a couple people signed up.
Good morning.
I'm coming from Corey Thompson, Deputy Thompson, Restorative Deeds. I'm coming on behalf of the citizens and my coworkers. We have been dealing with some situations in the office that have been blocking us from helping the constituents to the efficiency capacity that we could get them out faster. And I just wanted to open up a door to, open up a lid so y'all can see some of the concerns that we have daily. All right, so I want to start with, we have typewriters in the computer, in our office, right? And we have to use typewriters daily to get the constituents out to our, I mean, to get the information out to the people. We, I'm nervous right here right now, sorry about that.
It's okay, take your time.
So, just let me start in one second, okay? So basically, what I want to tell y'all is about how we do our daily operations, okay? Daily operations, we have to go to a printer, set up the printer, then we have to leave from the printer and go to a typewriter, right? I think in the twenty-third, twenty-third century, that we should be able to go to the computer and give our constituents the things that they need in a timely manner. It takes us ten minutes to do a birth certificate or five minutes to do a death certificate. If we have ten death certificates from, from, we have ten death certificates from, I'm sorry, y'all, if we have ten death certificates from the printer homes, then we cannot get them out in time, right? Because we have to go to the antiquated systems and, and not be able to do it in time. I'm really, turn this off, see, okay, so, the main issue that we face in the office every day is the demand of people coming in, and more, we got more online demand, we got more in-person demand, and we can't, we can't, we cannot get, we cannot meet these demands. I'm sorry, y'all, we can't meet these demands like we're supposed to be able to, because we're not efficient, efficient enough to meet the demands with the equipment that we have. I had this all planned out correctly, but let me just speak from, from my mind, daily day operations, let me speak from that. All right, so whenever Mr. Tony came there, and he was there to see how we operate, and to, typewriters are ready, can we say that first, right? And we are not trained to fix typewriters. We are now looking to order new typewriters, and we have had other registrants from other counties to come and visit us, and when they come, they are mortified at the way we have to operate. When they see me walk to a typewriter, they couldn't understand, like, why do you go to the typewriter? And I like to joke with them and say, this is the Flintstones, right? But really, it's really not a joke, because we can't efficiently help the people. There are softwares that are available that we don't have, where you can actually just type in a name, put the vital records onto the paper, and once we do that, then you could get it to the people. But instead of doing that, we have to take a whole ten-minute process of going to a book with other people's information in the book, and we have to open up these books, and these are records of people from nineteen thirteen, and we have to open these up and fondle them, and actually then put them back, and then we have to go to the printer and try to figure out if it's going to fit right, and then print it, and hopefully that it prints correctly. And if it doesn't print correctly, then we have to waste paper, which is not efficient, we're wasting money, so we're not efficient on, on uses of waste of paper, on our time and processing the vital records to give to the people. And there are all systems that we could use that could update us, and we could be more efficient to help the people. There's a whole long list of things I can go down, right? I really want to just open up just a little bit so y'all can see what we deal with daily. I got really nervous when I got here in front of y'all, because to me, this is a real big issue, right? I've been working with the Restorative Deeds for a year, and I got my yearly badge made, and I've been a citizen of Wayne County my whole life. I actually love working this job because I'm helping, helping the people. But doing it, I see the things that holding me back from doing, from helping the people in the best way I could, and my coworkers too, also. And I think we have a real great group of people that I work with, the Restorative Deeds have been going really well, oh, time is up. All right, thank you for that, y'all, sorry for bothering, but I hope y'all got a little bit of understanding of what I was trying to say.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I may, ma'am, if I may.
I actually, I went down and I had to get a birth certificate done, and this gentleman helped me, and I, and I appreciate that. But what I did, what I did notice, I noticed that, like he stated, they had to use word processors, that's what I grew up with, word processors, and they had to take the copies of the records, and they had to put it on a printer, and they had to adjust it, and it was a lot of waste. It was, if, if that, if that item wasn't perfectly put in, it's like art, if you don't have it in there perfectly, you're going to have to dispose of a copy because it's not going to line up correctly. And I saw summer youth employees there, which I was glad to see them there, and they were going through the same difficulties. So I think that overall, we definitely need to try to see if there's something more we could do. You know, in today's standards, we shouldn't have a word processor, you should be able to use a computer, things are printed out, and it's more efficient. I really appreciate you coming here, and I'm glad I had an opportunity to see it for myself, you know? Thank you so much.
All right, thank y'all for listening to, I'm sorry, we went over time.
That's fine, we're good.
Good job.
We have one more, Laura Hodges. I'm speaking about Laura. I'm not sure if you had signed up for public comment.
I'm sorry, I signed up the wrong weekend.
Okay, that's fine. No, ma'am, you're good.
Madam Chair.
Glad to see you here.
Madam Chair, I see one of the summer youth employees that worked in Restorative Deeds. I, I know that she probably wanted to say something, is that okay if she says something?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jayla Rose Timothy.
Could you speak up, honey, I can't hear you.
My name is Jayla Rose Timothy, I am, like he said, a summer youth employee, and I had the pleasure of working in the register of deeds. And as Corey said, it is a great job, but the equipment makes it very difficult to be as efficient as we need to be to meet the demands of the people. Because sometimes death certificates can come in and they need five copies, and, well, people don't want to wait for however long to get a simple copy of something, they should be able to get it faster. But our equipment makes it difficult for us to be able to do that. So with that, we should have updated equipment as other counties do, because like Corey said, once again, they see our equipment and they think, wow, this is really old, because it is. And having to look up things in really big old books instead of on a computer is very not efficient of our time.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much, and thank you for being part of our program as well, we appreciate it.
And I, Madam Chair, I've had the opportunity to talk to several of those summertime employees. That, that, you know, that, that was a great program, I mean, it, this, this, this opened up a lot of eyes, eyes for the youth to see kind of how government does work. All righty, that was our last public comment. Speaker will now have county managers report, I only have one little item to note, at our airport today at five p.m., there will be a ribbon cutting for a flight school that's opening there at five o'clock, just if you can make that or, or think about it, I'd just like to give you notice of that. That's the only comment I have, thank you, Madam Chair. On to the Board of Commissioners Committee reports.
What, Mr. Thompson?
I'll let, do a shout out to Wayne Community, no, I'm sorry, to Wayne Memorial, I actually call now Wayne UNC Healthcare, they received a four-star rating this past season, and UNC Healthcare Wayne now joins only twenty-six percent of the U.S. hospitals receiving such a rating from CMS. So good job to Dr. Tucker and his crew.
And that is regarding a stroke?
Yes, oh.
Certification?
Not only that, let me go on this, it's going to run a little bit long, Madam Chair, okay? They've received a CMS four-star hospital quality rating for the fourth consecutive semi-annual leapfrog safety score of A, and that's the highest score ever. They've received their first-ever Joint Commission Advanced Primary Stroke Center Certification. They received their first-ever Joint Commission Hip and Knee Replacement Certification. They received their first-ever Maternity Hospital Recognition, and the list goes on, Madam Chair.
Yeah. How?
That's it.
Mr. Wees?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to go to our Summer Youth Employment Celebration luncheon, we had staff there and department heads that also came. The kids were amazing, I had put a little speech together, but I couldn't even read it because it just, they were just, they just overwhelmed me, they made, they made me feel so proud, you know, because sometimes when we look at our young people, we're like, wow, is this our future? You know, you get nervous, you know? But these kids, you know, the department head spoke so highly of them, they said that they were great, they wanted, they wanted to continue the program, just, I, I saw a lot of improvement in some of the kids that had, had their second year there. The first year, they were kind of quiet, they, you know, reserved, and then I started to see them come out of their shell the second year, and that's so important to be able to learn how to interact, how to get the soft skills, and, I mean, I really want to thank this board. I really thank you guys, because it's just so important that our kids have, have something to do, you know, while they're away from school. And, you know, learning and learning how to interact, learning how the government works,
And, you know, learning and learning how to interact, learning how the, the government works, you can't beat that. You can't beat that, you know, and I hope that the board continues it, that's what the kids ask, that we continue the program. I'm hoping that it grows, you know, and, um, you know, just kudos to all the departments that decided to be part of it, you know? And, um, the ca- and also the Wayne Community College, you know, they actually helped with the program too, so I want to shout them out as well. Um, that's it, thank you.
And I've come, uh, mentioned to a few municipalities, this might be a good thing for them as well, in small towns, to maybe, um, do the same program with a few of the community children that might need this kind of program, like Fremont and Pike, or different ones of Mount Olive, you know? Take in some students or, you know, in the community that might need these kind of programs, so.
And you'd be surprised how much joy it brings to a young person when they do have something to do like that. I mean, kids that probably don't smile too much, you see them smiling. I mean, it, you, it's, it's worth it, it's worth it.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you.
Commissioner Drucker?
Today I want to vent a little bit. You know, as we go through life, there are people that, uh, you encounter and you remember their words. You know, remember the words of Colonel Slocum. Sometimes you gotta call the baby ugly. I'm rather frustrated in regards to the progress of our city of Goldsboro of issuing a building permit for one of the long overdue buildings that the county needed to fund, and that's our new human resources building. The county of Wayne has in fact stepped up and committed to building a new health and DSS building. We've hired architects, and those architects are renowned and have produced the plans that we have submitted to the city of Goldsboro in March. In March, today is August the first, and we still do not have a building permit. Now I want you to think about that for a moment. This is the county of Wayne. It's not a matter that we're going to pick up and leave. It's not a matter that we are an entity that they cannot feel is responsible. If they're treating the county of Wayne and delaying a building permit on architectural drawn drawings, and they're delaying it to this extent, what are they doing for businesses that want to come to our community? I saw, and, and, and I, I'm sorry if I'm gonna go long, but I'm really frustrated over it. I saw a, and had communications with economic development, I'm on the WCDNA board, and we work hard to bring jobs and investment to this community. We have lost two billion, that's with a B, two billion dollars' worth of investment in this community because of the city of Goldsboro. We have a real issue here. This is not political, this is our community. Now, the city of Goldsboro needs to get their act together. If in fact someone wants to invest in our community, they ought to be able to go to the city of Goldsboro, submit their plans, and get in a reasonable time them reviewed and a building permit issued. August the first. Let's count them up. March, April, May, June, July, five months, and no building permit. We have our contractors, which is T.A. Loving, on site today, ready to start construction, and we don't have a building permit. I'm sorry if I've been it. I have tried to reach out to council members, I've tried to reach out to the city to try to get this matter resolved. Our architects are frustrated, they are not getting the job done. We've asked, and our county manager has reached out to them, our facilities, individuals have reached out to them, and again, we're stonewalled. Again, it is time that we get a building permit and get this project going. I'm sorry if I've been it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Burden?
I'm gonna shock everybody in here, I agree with everything Joe just said. The, uh, and the issue with the, um, the two billion dollars of investment, which brings revenue to the city as well as the county, not to mention the amount of jobs that, uh, it would have provided, uh, which would give us, uh, more volunteers for our, uh, our needed, uh, organizations, for Freedom Fest, the volunteer fire service. Um, the sewer system is an issue. It's an issue that if we don't fix, industry is just gonna keep bypassing Wayne County. Wayne County is, is the, the first true eastern North Carolina county. You know, everybody says eastern ninety-five, well, Johnson County is overflow awake. Wayne County is the first, um, eastern North Carolina county, and I call it, you know, we're the crossroads, because we got seven ninety-five, that runs from ninety-five and will eventually, uh, all the way to forty, uh, as the interstate. We've got, uh, forty-two, which is seventy bypass, whatever you want to call it, from there to the coast, so we got ports. We've got, uh, interstate, highway, north, south, east and west. So Wayne County could really benefit. But if we don't have a sewer system, we're dead in the water. And right now, we're dead in the water. So we, as a board, have committed to, um, look at alternative measures to, uh, which is not gonna be cheap. But we're reaching out to our legislators, federal and state, uh, to try to improve our, our infrastructure needs, so, thank you, ma'am.
Miss Rayco?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, had the pleasure of going down to Cherry Point with Mr. Harson and Chair Acop to the Razor Talon. I'd been to several of them, this one was quite different. Uh, it was, uh, really pertaining to more of safety and, uh, security for the base. It was, uh, it was very interesting, uh, but it was outside in July, and it was very hot. But they did put on a, a, a real good program, and, and the reason they used, they went to Cherry Point was they just needed more space than what they had at Seymour Johnson. And Cherry Point was gracious enough to let them, uh, use their facility. But, uh, you know, I, I'm not gonna say I learned as much about this one as I have some of the ones in the past. But this was really, uh, something that I had never really thought about, the security on base, but, uh, if you go out there and you try to pull anything off, uh, you're being washed, you don't know you're being washed, but they, but they know what's going on. Uh, and I also had the opportunity to, uh, go to, uh, tour the new Fremont school. They're coming right along on it, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be a great asset to Wayne County, especially to the northern Wayne County. But, uh, as y'all saw this morning, the subdivisions that's going in northern Wayne County, uh, look out, 'cause here comes the portable classrooms again. I mean, it's, it's a dawn if you do it, dawn if you don't. You know, you think you're building a school large enough to accommodate for several years and, but, uh, you know, they, you know, you, we've got one subdivision with fifty-six houses coming in it, one with eighty-seven. I, I mean, it, it's, and it's on, just on and on, so, uh. And we do have a good working relationship with this school board right now, but, you know, if the subdivisions keep coming, the, the money's got to come from somewhere because the schools want to be built. And that's all I have. No, I have one more thing. I did get a chance to speak with one of the summertime youth, uh, employees that worked at the nine-one-one center. Uh, young lady, she's, uh, while she's in high school, she's taking courses at Wayne Community, and she was so, so keyed up, uh, and when she finishes her courses at Wayne Community, she wants to go to Campbell and be an attorney. And that's, uh, I mean, it, she was, she was, she was, she impressed me, and, and that's, that's, that's great, that's great. So, that's all I have, Madam Clerk.
A lot of great kids.
Madam Chair.
That young lady that spoke today, she wants to go to Spelman. So they, they, they have high hopes and high expectations, and I think this program definitely helps.
And, and they can do it, I mean, with, with, with enthusiasm and, and, and their, their go-get-it attitude, I mean, they can do it, they can do it. And, and they're, they're, they're our future. They're our future.
And Commissioner Williams, I hope the exposure that we have allowed them, you know, to come into this program encourages them to show them that they can do it. You know, sometimes you might feel like you cannot do something until you get exposure to something and say, I can.
You know, I know that I spoke already, so forgive me. Um, but I was, I've been searching our local papers, and not one article, not one article. We see all the bad things that happen in the county and in the city, but not one article without all these young people.
And I sent a text to the paper and asked why it was not covered.
That is horrible.
Yeah.
Because guess what? If we make it popular for kids to want to work, other kids are gonna want to work, and we're gonna build a better community.
Yeah.
You know? Thank you.
And build less jails, hopefully.
Yes!
All right, I, I would like to thank Colonel Till and Colonel Walker for the invitation to Cherry Point. And like Commissioner Acop said, it was one hot day. But I feel like, uh, we had a lot of good camaraderie there. And one interesting thing was, was the, uh, the live dummies they had there. I mean, they, they would stretch them out on the, uh, runways, and these dummies would cry out. Some of them had their arms cut off, some of them had their legs cut off, they would bleed. I mean, it was just unbelievable, these dummies, they looked like real people there. But, uh, it was very interesting, this was one of the first ones that I'd ever attended. And, uh, but I heard some good stories about other ones at Seymour, and I'm looking forward to them. Also, we talk about sewer. I want to emphasize on sewer. I worked in sewer as a county administrator for Fremont. If you don't have sewer, you're gonna lose. And we're gonna lose if we don't take this sewer issue very seriously. We keep talking about it, we keep mentioning it, but it's something that's gonna have to happen. Our county is growing. Uh, you can see that from the, uh, land plots that we're getting to build in this community. But people gonna have somewhere to work, they've got to have somewhere to work. Well, like Commissioner Drucker said, we've lost a lot of businesses because we don't have the sewer capacity. We're meeting to, uh, get everybody on board about sewer. It's a subject that has really not been talked about until the last few years, until it's a problem. Uh, Mount Olive, look at Mount Olive, they cannot grow. They've been in a moratorium for over seven years, I think it is.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. Eleven years that this town is sitting there and cannot grow. Well, look at everything that's coming to our area, what if we go in a moratorium? Everything's gonna stop.
And all it's gotten to be is a wet year.
And if we have a hurricane or whatever in the state, they will put you in a moratorium, and it is very difficult to get out of. I worked for town, sewer broke that town because of the INI issues, because there was not money to repair the issues. So everybody needs to start talking about, what are we gonna do about sewer? When you see somebody representative say, what are you gonna help us do and get this problem corrected? Because we're gonna need money to get it done. So we all need to start speaking out because it is a serious problem. So I'm asking people that are listening to this video today, start talking about it, because it is a problem. That's all I have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, you, you, you made some good points, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm seventy-seven years old. Uh, when I was born, sewer was no big issue, but this is twenty-twenty-three. I mean, you, you, you got to get on board and, and, and go with, sometimes we don't like change, but, uh, this is really not, I would consider, change, but, uh, I mean, to, but to get, like you said, to get industry in here, and, uh, it would also, uh, cut down on the valuable farmland that we're losing, because, you know, with, with, uh, sewer in the county, uh, you can, you can put more houses on a, on a piece of property when you've got sewered and when you have to use separate tanks. I mean, and this is, this is gonna be a very expensive project. Uh, I don't know how we're gonna pay for it, I mean, I noticed some grants out there, but, uh, either this board or the next board has got to bite the bullet and start doing something, because, uh, if not, uh, you can, you can forget about Wayne County. I mean, you know, and, uh, there's two things that we've got, we have asked you more than two, but, uh, we, we've got to protect Seymour Johnson, and we've got to protect the, the farmland. That's the two largest employers in income in, in Wayne County. And, uh, you know, no one likes to talk about the sewer, but, you know, it's, 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 it's a must, I mean, uh, I probably won't never live to see it, but my, my concern is my children and grandchildren. I mean, you know, they, they, they're our future, uh, and you know, we have had some meetings concerning the sewer, and we've got to continue to have them, and we got to, uh, there's, there's several different groups that's involved in it, and you got to swallow your pride and, and work together, because the only way that this is gonna work is you've got to work together. It may not suit everybody's, uh, fancy, but, uh, you know, swallow your pride and let's get on board and get something done. Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else? We done, Mr.?
Uh, do we have any other questions? No, we're done, we're ready to adjourn.
Okay, all right.